Good evening, everybody.
I'll watch you.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the dear one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence for the victims of Hurricane Helene and also for the victims of the airplane crash at First Flight Airport. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Candidate Forum for the Deere County Board of Education, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Deere County. I am Fran Kapinos, coordinator, co-coordinator with Laura Singletary for this forum. I'd like to thank you all as well as the candidates for participating in this event this evening. I want to let you know that the Board of Commissioners has also made available the Pheasanton Annex in Buxton for voters on Hatteras Island to listen to this forum and submit questions. And once we get connected, a warm welcome to those who are watching from Buxton. We are videotaping this event this evening and it will be available on our League of Women Voters YouTube page as well as on Current TV in about three or four days. The League of Women Voters is celebrating its 104th anniversary and we are proud to continue the tradition of bringing candidates and voters together in this way to empower voters. I will now introduce the moderator for this event, Courtney Gallup.
Good evening, I'm Courtney Gallup. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Deere County. I live in Nags Head. The League is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in all levels of government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League maintains a strict, nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. The League participates in the positive campaign project and has requested that each candidate tonight take the Code of Campaign Ethics pledge. We prohibit campaigning or campaign literature in this forum room. Please turn off all cell phones or electronic devices. Texting and taking photos or video is prohibited. We do ask that the audience be respectful of the candidates by refraining from clapping or cheering for individual candidates. And please wait until the end of the forum to clap for all candidates. Thank you very much for that. League members participating tonight are our greeters, who will also retrieve question cards from you, the audience. They are Jean Loudon, Joe Voight, and Karen Laurie. At the Pheasanton Center, they are Kristin Bennett and Audrey Kramer. Our question reviewers for tonight are Nancy Birindelli, Marion Midget, and Carol Sykes. Our timekeeper tonight is Lorelei D. Bernardo. We do encourage a lively and respectful discussion. If you think of a question during the forum, please raise your hand and one of our staff will hand you a question card. Please write legibly and be sure to sign your card. Let me now tell you about the candidates. There are four Board of Education seats up for election on November 5th, and there are seven candidates on the ballot. Present this evening are Justin Bateman, District 1, who is running unopposed. Candidate Bateman may make opening and closing statements and choose which, if any, questions he responds to. David Twitty at large is the incumbent. Melissa Zainer at large. Lisa Lloyd, District 2. Haley Carey, District 2. Unfortunately, candidate Heather Euler from District 4 was not able to join us this evening due to complications from COVID. Kenny Bright, District 4. At this time, I'm going to remind the candidates to, when you want to be heard, please press the red Talk button on your console to speak. When you have finished speaking, press the red button again when you're finished. The format for the forum: Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. The timekeeper will signal when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining. The timekeeper will stand if the candidate continues past the allotted time. Next, candidates will respond to questions from the audience. Questions were either submitted prior to the forum by voters, or they may be submitted tonight during the forum. They are signed with their town of residence or business location. League reviewers review questions for clarity and to avoid duplication. We believe this procedure does afford the greatest variety of subjects to be covered in the allotted time. The League advocates positive campaign practices, and we do reserve the right to admit any question that is viewed as a personal attack. I will read the question as written and identify the submitter. Questions may be addressed to a specific candidate or all candidates. Questions directed to a specific candidate may then be answered by any candidate if desired. Two minutes are allotted for responses. The timer will signal the candidate when 30 seconds remains and stand if the candidate goes over the time allotted. Opportunities will not be extended tonight to those who initially pass on a question. Finally, each candidate is entitled to a two-minute closing statement. Before we started the event, candidates did draw numbers to establish the order for their opening statements. We will reverse that order for closing statements. We will begin the opening statement portion of this evening as the following. Candidate David Twitty will be first. Candidate Kenny Bright will be second. Candidate Justin Bateman will be third. Candidate Lisa Lloyd will be fourth. Fifth will be candidate Melissa Zainer. Sixth will be candidate Haley Carey. Let's begin with candidate David Twitty.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Twitty. I grew up in Eastlake with four brothers and a sister. Graduated from Manio High School in 1988. During my time at Manio High School, I drove a school bus. And at that time, I realized transportation was calling for me. I love transportation in Deere County schools. It was a calling. I spent 30 years working for the Transportation Department in Deere County schools. In my tenure, I was able to work through and be the Transportation Director where I retired from. With that past experience, it gave me the opportunity to work in the budget field, the relationship with other school administrators, as well as the team leadership for Deere County schools. I have a passion for Deere County schools. I love what I do currently. I was selected for two terms. I hope to be selected again for a third term to serve the community as well as our staff and students of Deere County schools. Thank you.
Next will be candidate Kenny Bright.
Good evening, folks. My name's Kenny Bright. Before I get started here, I'd like to reiterate the compassion we have for our neighbors out in the western part of the state. And please understand that we've sent power line crews, we've sent EMS strike teams, we've sent law enforcement, we've sent firefighters. So we have our local heroes out there doing some of the heavy lifting, and I just wanted to make sure that they got acknowledged tonight. So, my name is Kenny Bright. I'm a 31-year resident of Avon. I'm married to a beautiful woman named Carrie. Hey, baby, where's the camera? Hey, babe. And I have a 15-year-old son, Miles, who's in the 10th grade at Cape Hatters. I have a long history of public service for Deere County. In my 31 years, I've spent 21 years volunteering with Avon Volunteer Fire Department. I have 16 years with the Hatteras Island Rescue Squad. I put 20 years in with Deere County EMS, which I retired last September. Thank you, Deere County. And I'm also a founding member of the Hatteras Island Community Emergency Response Team, where I currently serve as Response Coordinator. I don't, I'm not joining this board or trying to join this board or get elected because I think there's a ton of things in this county that need fixing. The position that I'm running for was vacated so the incumbent could run for another office, and I want to continue the strong work that this board has been doing. I feel like we have great facilities, we have great educators, and we have great students. And I just want to do my part to help continue that and help us grow and improve. Thank you.
Next, we will have candidate Justin Bateman.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Justin Bateman. I'm a 39-year-old wine cheeser, 13th-generation wine cheeser. I currently reside in Wine Cheese with my wife Carrie. I have a wife named Carrie too, Kenny. And my two boys, Austin, who's 10-years-old in 4th grade at Manio Elementary School, and my 3-year-old son Murray, who is currently in exceptional children's classes at Manio Elementary School as well. I'm also a proud member of Wine Cheese Assembly of God Church. I believe that Mr. David Twitty and I are the only ones sitting up here that are graduates of Deere County schools. So this is kind of personal for us. I graduated from Manio High School as senior class president in 2003, served in the United States Army, graduated from Santa Fe College in Gainesville, Florida with a technical degree in metal alloy fabrication. That's welding for the layperson. I worked in country radio for about nine years before landing my current job as a podcast host and marketing executive with One Boot in Outer Banks this week. I've served on various boards throughout my life, more currently being the precinct chair from Wine Cheese to the Deere County Republican Party. I'm on the Deere Education Foundation Board of Directors, the Wine Cheese Community Building Board of Directors. I'm the vice chair of the Deere County Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I'm a member of Manio Elementary Schools PTO and SIT teams. I do a lot of coaching throughout the year, primarily in baseball. I helped lead our regular season Deere County baseball team to an undefeated record and went on in assisting our All-Star team to championships in Williamson, the Invitational Tournament, and third place overall in the Tar Heel League District Tournament. I wish Steve House was here right now. I'm gonna quote one of my favorite all-time actors. Those of you that follow me on Facebook, y'all really seem to like my quotes. His name's Jim Varney. Most of you probably know him as Ernest P. Worrell, all right? In one of his movies, Ernest Goes to Camp, in a more serious part of the movie, he says, with tears running down his face, "This place and these kids mean everything to me." Well, that's exactly how I feel. I know I'm not gonna know how to do some things just yet, and I may not have all the answers right now, but by God, by God, I will work my butt off to make sure that our children, teachers, administrators, and all faculty members and our superintendent have what they need in order to carry out their duties. My position is simple: Is what we are doing today gonna benefit our children tomorrow? Thank you.
Candidate Lisa Lloyd.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. I understand when you put together something of this magnitude, it takes a lot of work and preparation. So especially a nonpartisan event, to be fair to both sides, I appreciate that a lot. I am originally from Mobile, Alabama, so I'm not a native like the gentlemen on either end or who have lived here a long time. But I think my experience in life has been unique. I went to college in Alabama and received my degree in education with an emphasis in special education. I always enjoyed working with children and even adults who had needs and concerns in their life that others may tend to overlook and not spend time with. Upon living in Alabama during that time, I met my husband of 35 years now, and he was a military guy, and so I think you know what that means. Started military moving and we lived all over the country. So every two to three years, we were in a new community, a new location, a new place. But during those times, I would either teach, I volunteered, I always wanted to be involved in the community because I wanted to be aware of what was going on with the students and the families around me and my children. I believe that the students are our future here in Deere County, not just today, but the future. They're gonna be the ones sitting up here one day doing this forum. They're gonna be the ones that we're looking to vote for in the future. And so, like Justin said, I'm doing this for the students. I want to run for our children and the future that they have. And so I just thank you each and every one for being here tonight. It's nice to see a lot of friendly faces out there and smiling faces. That really helps when you smile for people up here that are nervous. So thank you so much for this, and we hope that you have submitted some good questions for us to talk about.
Candidate Melissa Zainer.
Okay. Hi. Sorry. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the Deere County League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I want to take this time to introduce myself for those of you that don't know me. My name is Melissa Zainer. I was born and raised in Farmville, Virginia. My father was a small business owner and a carpenter. My mother was an elementary school teacher, allowing me to see firsthand the challenges that teachers face. My parents instilled in me, huh, a love of learning and the value of hard work. And they also instilled in me a love of this place when they brought me to the Outer Banks for the first time when I was six months old. I graduated from Randolph-Macon Women's College with a degree in communication and spent years working in minor league baseball, moving from an unpaid intern to the stadium operations director. I then went into restaurant management, where I managed large budgets and teams of staff. Both of these careers taught me the importance of teamwork, leadership, and making responsible financial decisions, skills that I believe are critical when serving on the Board of Education. After starting our family, my husband's career brought us to the Outer Banks, where our children now attend Deere County schools. I've had the honor of serving as a board member for Outer Banks Mommy and Me, as well as being involved on the board at St. Andrews Preschool in Nags Head. I am currently a member of the Deere County Schools Pre-K Advisory Committee and the Deere Education Foundation Outreach Committee. When my daughter started kindergarten, my mother told me that I should pay attention to school board meetings. And, sorry, and while I do what my mom tells me to do. So this led to discussions with friends and other parents across the community and the realization that many of us did not and still do not feel represented by the school board. There's a lack of communication, and it became clear that we needed a stronger connection between our families and our schools. Serving on the school board is a huge responsibility that takes dedication, passion, and a real commitment to supporting our schools. It's my belief that education isn't just a privilege, it's a right. It opens doors and gives our kids the chance to succeed. As a parent and the daughter of a teacher, I've seen both the strengths and the struggles of public schools up close. I believe that we need to be investing heavily in elementary and early childhood education. Whatever path a student chooses, they are more likely to succeed if they have access to quality early childhood education. I look to support our teachers by advocating for a living wage, housing stipends, protecting their autonomy, and including them in decision-making. Focusing on the mental well-being and safety of teachers and students is also critical as teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. And finally, improving the communication between the board, schools, and families would strengthen the connection and make our schools even better than they are now. I thank you all for being here.
Candidate Haley Carey.
Hi, I'm Haley Carey, and I'm running to represent District 2, which includes Nags Head, Collington, and Kill Devil Hills on your Deere County Board of Education. I'm a proud teacher, a parent of two future Deere County school students, and have lived and worked here in the Outer Banks, both teaching and alongside many of you and your high school-age students in the service industry for the last eight years. Having been an educator in various modes and locations for the last decade since I graduated college, I know firsthand that Deere County has some of the most special, innovative, hardworking, and talented kids and teachers out there. At the same time, I can see the growing contention between groups in our community. Parents and teachers and school leadership are supposed to be working together toward the best interests of all students and staff. So with the perspective of a teacher and the motivation of a parent, I'm running for school board to make school better for my kids and yours, to ensure representation and consideration of the academic, social, and emotional needs of all Deere County schools' students and staff by restoring transparency, accountability, and a cooperative spirit to the Board of Education. Thanks to my own educational background and unique work experiences, I am well-prepared to do this job. I was a collegiate athlete at Appalachian State University while earning my Bachelor's of Science, and I have a Master's Degree in Policy from UNC Wilmington. I worked with at-risk youth as a wilderness therapy guide while simultaneously teaching them the Utah State science standards in the field. I got to work with K-12 students and teachers from across the state and right here in Deere County through my first Outer Banks job at the Coastal Studies Institute in Wine Cheese, and taught high school for three years right here in Deere County before making the choice to stay home with my kids. So I may not be a local local, but I do know Deere County and our teachers and families and students like no one who hasn't worked with them directly ever could. If elected, I will prioritize research-based and forward-looking policies that nurture and educate the whole child, creative and proactive strategies for recruiting and retaining excellent teachers and staff, and increasing availability of pre-K and early childhood educational resources for all the families who want or need it. I thank you all for being here and the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum.
Now we will have questions from the voting public and the audience. Question number one. The question is submitted from Megan Lambert. Please highlight your experience or background that will solidify your position as a Board of Education member. The question is for all candidates, starting with candidate Zainer.
Well, way to just start it off then. Like I said, I grew up, the daughter of a teacher. I had the distinct experience because my mother had me very young. If she watches this, she'll be very upset that I said that, but she did. And so I watched my mom. I was there when she went through college, when she did her student teaching, when she did her practicums. I helped her make her bulletin board things. I was raised by teachers. She and her friends were the people that I spent the most time with after school and all of those. And my work experience is really valuable. I have worked kind of all up and down the East Coast in lots of different cities with lots of different people from lots of different places, big personalities, all of that. I think that I am willing to put in the work, willing to put in the time. I'm a big researcher. I love to dive into things and really learn about them. And I think that's really important, especially when we're creating policies for schools. We need people who are thoughtful and deliberate in their approach to this seat.
Candidate Lloyd.
Thank you. I think my background in education, having taught special education students as well as second grade, and then I've worked also with English as a Second Language students when we were stationed in California, really helps me have a wide variety of different children that I have worked with. I've also worked with people in crisis situations, so I think that also would help me work with my teammates and the other board members, you know, working through different conflicts and different issues that we may face. And so I think having lived all over, seeing many different places, many different ways that people are educated, whether it was public school, private school, or in situations where I was working primarily with remedial readers, I think all of those helped me have a good vision and eye for the things that our students here in Deere County may need up and down the beach.
Candidate Bright.
I don't have the education background that some of these other candidates have. But I do have a strong history of public safety and awareness. I have the ability to spot issues before they become issues. I feel like my local knowledge, my local connections, and my connections across the state will benefit Deere County and Deere County schools. I feel like these relationships that we have with the Board of Commissioners, all the way up to the Governor's Office, are important and they should be maintained. And I already have some of that in place. So I do feel like I may have an advantage over my opponent in that category. So I feel like the relationships, the working with Raleigh, to get working with the legislators to free up money to help get our teachers paid better is where I'm gonna shine for Deere County Board of Education.
Candidate Carey.
I would say that as far as qualifications and background, though I touched upon my formal educational experience, I didn't specify that my bachelor's degree is in environmental biology and not education. So in becoming a teacher, I took the lateral entry or non-traditional route, which gave me a lot of unique work experiences along the way. Coincidentally enough, always right at the edge of teaching and education, working in outreach for the city of Wilmington Stormwater Services with the school districts there, and also with the at-risk youth in the wilderness therapy setting, where we were also responsible for completing their science curriculum while we were out in the field and in the backcountry. An additional piece of my background I didn't include is that what brought me here to the Outer Banks is my husband's business, which was his dream to open, a recreational business in Corrala, Corrata County, but feeling local to the beach. I got the unique experience I never expected of starting up that business with him and our partners. I was the general manager responsible together for managing a budget, a lot of unknown variables, and a large amount of risk, all while hiring and training our first cohort of incredible staff. I also think that a major qualification for being on a board like the Board of Education is the communication and interpersonal skills required to mediate conflict and differences of opinion and value. I have, in my opinion, that skill set, and I'm looking forward to using it to bring the board together and the community together instead of using it to fuel division.
Candidate Twitty.
Thank you, ma'am. As I said, graduating from Manio High School in '88, I had the pleasure, starting in 1986, is to have the trust from the parents and the administration of Deere County schools. I was a bus driver at 16-years-old. I knew what the importance was to make sure these kids get to and from school safely. At age 16, that's a work ethic. That is what you're taught by your parents, and you bring that from that working relationship. Serving the 28 years of transportation, and as I said, as the director of it, working along with the budget, administration, the safety concerns that y'all have heard last Friday just with the weather, but numerous storms, working community, county-wide for Deere County, serving the last eight years on this school board, making changes in the right direction. Is there future for more changes? Yes. Nothing's perfect. There's always a need to look forward. We were able the last few years to give teachers increase in their supplements and also our classified employees an increase in their salary along working with our county commissioners. So it takes a group. It doesn't take just one person on the Board of Education. It takes a team to listen, to work with the administration, have that time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates. Question number two, submitted by Jamie Wagner. Oh, yes, candidate Bateman.
Yeah, I know that you were told, I was told that I didn't have to answer if I didn't want to, but I'm gonna do my best to answer every question. When I think about what experience I could bring to the table, I don't have some of the school accolades, teaching and things, and going to school for higher education for education. I went right into the Army right out of high school, okay? I was in, I was what was called a 19 Delta Cav Scout, okay? That was somebody that goes out in front of the front to hear about the front line. I went out in front of the front line to scout out to see what the terrain and everything the enemy was up to. I had to think a lot of times under fire, okay? That was part of my job description. Moving on into a professional world, I've joined a lot of organizations where I have been put in situations to make decisions and work cohesively as a unit with other people. Maybe people that I don't agree with their opinions or whatnot, but we had to find a common ground, okay? I'm willing to find that common ground on whatever solution or whatever situation is brought up, okay? I guess I'd say discipline, hardworking, those are some of the different things I would bring to the table. I think it's, I gotta give my dad a lot of credit. He was one of the hardest-working people I know. He was the first school psychologist hired by Deere County Schools back in 1976 by Steve Bassnight, Sr. Or it's not senior, he was junior. Steve Bassnight right now is the third. So anyway, y'all get what I'm saying. I'm a go-getter. That's what I bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have question two, submitted by Jamie Wagner. Now we will have question two, submitted by Jamie Wagner of Southern Shores. The question is, what do you believe are the top three challenges currently facing the Dare County School District that the Board of Education should actively monitor and address? How would you prioritize these challenges and what specific actions would you advocate for to tackle them? First will be David Twitty.
Thank you, ma'am. Recruiting, our staff would be a top priority. Retention of our current staff. And we know there is mental health issues throughout this district. We, we were able to, this past year, to have a, a team set aside for the recruiting and retention that spent many, many hours of coming up with things that we could present to the board and to the commissioners to see where the next step we were able to go. With that, with that team presenting that information, we did present that to the commissioners this past year during our budget process and was very fortunate of having the funding for the supplements that I said earlier for our teachers and classified. The retention is there. The recruiting, of course, would be the housing situation. We got Mr. Payne as one of our board members that represents our Board of Education on that task force. There was a, a presentation on our last Monday night meeting from Mr. Farron and Ms. Creve of giving us an update on that housing task force where you can see where Dare County Schools is going to be very, very heavily involved in the steps that will come to the future of Dare County for housing. Mental health, that is an ongoing working relationship along with our school administrators, with our school nurses and our social workers as well. So that's the three things that I see in the future.
Candidate Carrie.
I'll follow the same format by listing my top three and then the actions afterward. I agree that staff retention and recruitment is a big problem facing our school district and also school districts nationally. I think a big part of that is, has been partially addressed or at least taken a great step forward by the achievement of the increased Dare County supplement, which went into effect this July. And I also think that we can do a lot better in keeping that ball rolling in the right direction. As a person who was a new staff member especially, I found it really difficult to balance the workload and the teaching load. And I think that that is something we could be creative in how we address it for new teachers. I didn't follow the format that I said I would. Second, I think that student mental and physical health is a often overlooked challenge and it adds to the deficit or the gap of achievement between students at different backgrounds and home lives. So school nutrition, nutritious food and available ample food are two ways to try to address that as a foundational requirement before a student can even get into the classroom. They need to be fed and they need to be fed something that is satiating and nutritious. I feel the same with physical health. I think especially in the younger, younger grades, children need to be able to move and have access to free play throughout their day. And this is all addressed by the whole student educational framework by addressing more than just their academic needs. The last is pre-K. The four-year-old more, for pre-K program. There are families and parents who need it that aren't able to have access. And I think having more access and more spots available would help students in our county too.
Next, we will have candidate Lloyd.
I agree with the teacher retention and the teacher pay. Those are really pressing issues that we all are fully aware of and that our commissioners are working really, really hard to give those supplemental increases every year. And we do appreciate that. Mr. Woodard's always made sure that that has been a top priority with our commissioners. In order to have, you know, good teachers and retention down here, you know, because this is a beautiful area, but it's an affluent area. And so that's something that they take into consideration. As was mentioned before, Mr. Payne is on the housing task force. They're working together as a group as well to make sure that housing is available for our teachers. And I think it goes even beyond teachers, maybe our first responders who can't find affordable housing as well. It can work for them as well. So it's a multifaceted program. And one other thing, I, I mean, it may sound pretty basic, but I think a focus that I would like to see, and I'm not 100% sure because I'm not on the board yet, but is a foundational, fundamental education for all of our students. All of our students have a right to that. And that might be very simple, but reading, writing and arithmetic. Let's keep it to what education is for in our schools. Our kids are young, their brains are still molding and forming, and any of the new ideas or concepts can be very hard and confusing. And then that transfers into the teacher's role as well. And so going back to the basics or making sure that's something that we keep our focus on is the most important to me. And I would like to be able to work on policy with that with the other board members. Thank you.
Candidate Bright.
Well, thank you. I was told I wasn't going to be getting questions, but I'm glad to have the opportunity. I'm gonna stick to it. I think getting, um, increase in teacher pay and incentive is, is what we need to do to attract the highest quality teachers. Who would not want to live in Dare County? We just got to make it so they can. If we can get the supplements and the pay up and maybe subsidize housing eventually, we, uh, we could attract the best of the best. I, I really feel like we could have 50 applications for one position if we made it a little easier to live here. And I'm not taking, talking about paying for everything. I'm talking about a little easier. I really feel like they want to be here. And I feel like that's where my focus would be, would be working the legislation, trying to free up money and get that money rolling to our teachers instead of sitting in an account somewhere. Second thing is going to be the housing for the teachers. I think we need to look at that, get more teacher housing going with the, um, with the Dare Education Foundation. I think that's the right way we need to go. So I'm gonna stick with two things. That's what I've got.
Next, we will hear from candidate Zainer.
So my number one is always going to be teachers. And it's not just about increasing their pay, it's about a livable wage. It's about getting in a car and going to Raleigh and advocating for them. I want to make sure that we're not just counting on local funds for our teachers, that we really are fighting for them at a state level because it's really important that, that happens. That is where the majority of their money comes from. I also think that we need to make sure that, of course, they have all the resources they need, housing stipends, more teacher housing. I know that we have some now. They're getting ready to build more units at, through the Dare Education Foundation, which I think is wonderful, but again, it's not going to be enough. And we want our teachers to be able to live where they work. I think that's a fair, that's a fair shot. Everyone should be able to live where they work. And then also just the respect for our teachers. I think over time, that job has become a less respected position. And it's really a shame because they have our kids for eight hours a day. A lot of parents spend more time or less time with their kids than their teachers do. It's a very important role and it needs to be treated as such. The second thing is early childhood education. It reduces disparities in communities. Again, giving a foundation for kids who later on in life, kids who, who attend pre-K programs, they do better. And the more that we can offer that, the more it takes the childcare piece off of parents' plates and makes our community healthier and better. And then I'll just say a cohesive relationship between the boards and families and teachers. I think that's important, something we need to work on. It's one of the things I hear about the most.
Candidate Bateman.
Thank you. I believe our top three challenges right now, and a lot of these, my mic working sometimes, I wonder if it's cutting in and out. A lot of these go hand in hand. So when you're helping the teachers, you're indirectly helping the students as well. So a lot of my stuff is kind of based around teacher, teachers as well. So like teacher retention is a big one for me. I, I'm a firm believer in the saying a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. I understand we've got to keep those that are retiring, you know, if we have teachers that are retiring, we have to replace them with a lot of times new teachers. So when it comes to retention though, as far as those that are already in place, have been in place, they're great teachers, keeping them here to me is very important. It's very, very important. Teacher housing is the next big one. I know that the commissioners have been working hard to make sure that there's, they've given a million dollars to the Dare Education Foundation to start the process of building more units. They're going to begin building more units. When? We don't know just yet. They're still navigating through some different things, but that is something that is coming down the pipe. Is it going to be 100 brand-new units? No, not right out the gate. But they're eventually going to continue adding on and they've created a great model that Dare Education Foundation has for these, for teacher housing, okay? For teacher housing. I'm a big advocate for teachers' mental health, okay? If you think about it, and there's teachers in this room, you go to work every day and you have to deal with 20 some odd different students with different, from different backgrounds, with different issues and situations. I believe that the teachers need an outlet to be able to, and there needs to be a line item in the budget somewhere for teachers to be able to have an outlet with a professional mental health service of some sort. So that's something that I'm a big proponent of is making sure that our teachers are well taken care of in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question is directed to all the candidates. It's submitted by Laura Allendorf. And the question is, what is your position on the Opportunity Scholarship Program? The first response will come from candidate Carrie.
The Opportunity Scholarship Program, if I'm not mistaken, refers to the school voucher program to fund families or students' tuition to private schools in our state at the expense of what otherwise would have been public school allocated dollars. That's what that is. My position on that is that while I wholeheartedly believe in the parent and the family's right to make the decision on what type of education and what school setting is best for their children, I, I believe that that is an elective choice that they would then also be making with their money. I do not believe that the Opportunity Scholarship should be funded with public money. I think that money is intended for the public school districts and the students in those school districts that need it. I will also note for anyone who isn't familiar, the majority of the families who receive or apply for Opportunity Scholarships already have chosen and are already sending their students to the private schools that the scholarship helps them to fund. And it is unlikely, in my opinion, my well-researched opinion, that the scholarships are touching the students, that it may have been initially conceived that they may have, those being the lowest income or the most disadvantaged student populations.
The next response will come from candidate Twitty.
Thank you, ma'am. I have to agree with her. It is a parent's choice of where they like to go to school. It does bother me somewhat in that they're looking and taking funds from the public education to, to, to make that happen because if they take the money from the public education, that means the Department of Public Instruction will not have the funds to give to each school districts there. Again, we would be going back to our county commissioners locally and ask for the, the difference of that funding to keep status quo that Dare County Schools is currently having right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bright.
Thank you. Well, I must admit, I'm not very well researched on this topic. I do feel like that anything that affects the school, local school board's budget should be very carefully considered. And I don't think any of us want to reduce our budget one dime for our school, for our kids at our schools. So I would definitely have to have more research to know if, um, if I could support this, but just hearing and knowing what little I know, I would not support it.
Candidate Zainer.
So the Opportunity Scholarship Program began to help disadvantaged kids. And it was a way for kids who were growing up in low-income families to maybe attend a private school in another town. But most recently, they have opened the floodgates. It's a tiered system. There, they did, they do still give those scholarships to those low-income families, but as of late, there has been about a half a billion dollars put forward of public school funding that has gone toward families whose incomes are 100,000 plus. These are people that were already sending their kids to private schools, as Haley said. And all of those funds are diverted from our public schools. The money follows the child, is how I always think of it. Like if the kid leaves, so does the money. Dare County, it's $295,000 that we're missing out on because of Opportunity Scholarships just in our county, and we only have three private schools. So if you think about other counties that have all of these private schools, their schools are going to crumble. And the issue is, there's no accountability with these schools. The schools who receive that money, the state money, they don't have to go through the same, jump through the same hoops that public schools do. Their teachers don't have to be certified. They don't have to offer exceptional children services. They don't have to offer IEP services. None of those things are accounted for, but they still get all of that money. And those are tax dollars that are drawn directly from us and given to private schools. So I, I guess you could say I'm not a huge fan. I think that public dollars belong in public schools. Thank you.
Candidate Lloyd.
I agree with the, the money follows the student, but I think the money following the student could follow the student to the public school. It could follow the student to the private school and a charter school. Having taught in public school and private school, I see the advantages of both. When I taught in private school, we had to be certified and we had to have those credentials before we could teach there. So I'm not familiar with schools where that's not a, a process for the teachers. The other thing I see is it gives people an opportunity to decide how their tax dollars are spent. You know, we're all concerned about how our tax dollars are spent, so it gives a parent that option. I do agree with the other concerns about people who already have the means and the income to pay for private school. I think that should be off the table. I definitely think someone who may not have the income to afford for their child to go to a private school has that opportunity to apply for a grant, or apply for this voucher, rather, and be able to do that. And one other thing I think is it fosters competition from between the public school, a charter school, a private school. When the public school sees the private school doing well or vice versa, they're going to be inclined to want to have those programs and opportunities for their students. And so that's just my opinion. I'm a little on both sides of the house, I guess you could say, but I see advantages of having it.
Candidate Bateman, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Despite what was said in the past about me not, or being in favor of those that support the, that I support, people that are actively trying to defund public education, I do not support the voucher program one single bit, okay? I do not support that. My son, my oldest son, during the COVID years, went to Wanchee's Christian Academy. It was the best choice for us at that time. I paid for that out of my pocket for the most part. There was a scholarship, a privately funded scholarship available for him to go there. I applied and I was granted that scholarship for him. That was privately funded, not by taxpayer dollars, not by our taxpayer dollars. I want to see our money, our taxpayer dollars, go towards our school system to better them, to better the teachers, to better the faculty members, anybody that it can benefit. I do not support the voucher program.
Question number three is directed to all candidates as well. It's submitted by Charlotte Harrow. The question has been condensed for length. The question is, what steps would you take to build a bridge of communication and collaboration with community members and school staff? Commissioners, candidate Zainer.
Okay, I'm gonna get this working, guys. So I think I've been researching this a lot and I've been looking at what other boards do because it really has been puzzling to me, you know, what's different about Dare County. And some of the things that I have really enjoyed are, well, not enjoyed, but that I, that I find could work here. First of all, I will say First of all, I will say that our meeting times, 5 o'clock on a Monday in Manio, you have 15 minutes to sign up for public comment, that does not work for most people. That is a hard gig. I try to be here every single meeting, and it is hard for anyone with a family, a job, to get here at 5:00, or get here between 4:30 and 4:45 if you actually want to speak. I look to other boards and I see just, language is different. They invite their teachers to come to their meetings. They want input from teachers and staff, and they want them to come in public comment, and they want them to be involved in the process. I don't see that in our language. One school board, which I think is a great idea, one school board in Virginia, they have one Saturday a month where they fill a gym with tables and coffee, and the entire board goes, and they welcome anyone to come and sit and have a conversation, talk about things. We have to open those doors. I think there's a lot to be said when people, you know, people will say, "Oh, just call me. Oh, just email me. Why aren't you emailing? Why aren't you calling?" Well, I think, look inward. Maybe that's why people don't call you. Maybe that's why people don't email you. I think there's a lot to be said for open communication and direct communication, and taking into account the community, the teachers, the students, all of their input, and then making decisions.
Thank you. The next response will be from candidate Carrie.
I think this is a great question, because I think it's a really important part of making our educational, our public edu, excuse me, making our system work and work better. I think right now, it's a problem that we don't have a smooth and open channel of communication that's easy and accessible for both teachers, parents, and leadership. I think one idea, like Melissa, I spent some time looking into things that other school districts are doing to address this problem, and one idea worth consideration, in my opinion, might be investing in a more comprehensive platform for school communication. So, for example, for anyone who's not a parent, or a teacher, or involved somehow, we have one, one platform, Power School, for grades and grade books, and sometimes assignments can be posted through there. We have different channels, different apps that teachers may choose to use for communication. We have email. We also have teaching platforms like Google Classroom, but these are all different and discreet. If there were some type of, like, customized system, which exists, sometimes they're custom-designed for the school district. Sometimes there's something you subscribe to that could integrate all of those things. I think it would really help just with the very most basic level of communication between parent and student and teacher, and administrator and counselor. So I think that's an idea worth exploring. I also think that, like, the culture and the environment around involvement in classrooms could be adjusted. For example, I love the idea of an open door and transparent policy between parents and teachers. I love the idea of a parent being able to drop in to see and learn what their students are doing, not for oversight, but so that they can be part of it, and so that they can assist with this shared mission of our kids' education in the best and most constructive way possible. I think more, but that's two minutes.
Candidate Lloyd.
Do you mind repeating the question for me?
Sure. "What steps would you take to build a bridge of communication and collaboration with community members and school staff?"
Thank you. I appreciate you repeating it. I agree with what everyone's saying about keeping those open lines of communication as being one of our most important things with parents, with the students. Sometimes I feel like parents get lost in the shuffle in education. It becomes about the teachers, which are a huge important part, but then the parents may not feel like they're being included in that decision-making process or in the classroom. And like Haley said, having parents be able to, you know, come in and observe what's going on in the classroom. I realize, you know, this day and age, that becomes a safety issue, and so we have to be cognizant and aware of that as part of, you know, what's going on. But I think keeping those lines of communication open are very important. Currently, I feel like our board does a really great job of letting us know what's going on. You can go on the website anytime and pull up previous boardment, you know, meeting and the minutes. You can go and watch it online. So I'm not necessarily, and, and you can email them. I've had to do that before and been responded to, so I don't see that as a major issue, in my opinion. But again, you know, there's always room for improvement in every area, and that's something that my main thing would be with the parents and the teachers and the students, and having that cohesive relationship of communication, especially as kids get older, as I've seen with my own children, as they were in high school. You know, they don't tell you everything. They don't let you in on everything. And so sometimes, as a parent of a high schooler, you're wondering, you know, what the heck's going on, and your child is not telling you. And so being able to go and approach the teacher about something you're questioning is very important.
Candidate Twitty.
Thank you, ma'am. I respect everybody's comment on this question tonight. With being on this board for eight years, the changes that we made during our board meeting was staff involvement. It was not a decision made by seven board members or the superintendent of Dare County Schools. We asked them to do a quick survey after COVID, because we had to buy equipment to go from school to school to broadcast our school meetings. It was taking anywhere from two to three staff members, eight hours a day, to set up and take down, and taking room from our children. We had children losing places to learn, so we could have a school board meeting in our school. That's not fair for our children. When you interrupt a whole day for them to come in, for us to have a school board meeting, it's just not acceptable. So working with our school administration, they thought that it would be best that we have a sit team for every school. Every school has internet. Everyone has the opportunity to broadcast what is going best for their school each and every day. And when we see the ones that come out and strive, like our soccer teams, our football teams that win states, national championships, things like that, we bring them to the Board of Education meetings, and we recognize their duties and their responsibilities and their hard work. So it was not something that was done just by seven board members. We did involve our total staff to make this decision, where we had this meeting each month. So, thank you.
Candidate Bright.
Thank you. I think the way to engage in the communication is to be accessible. Over the years, I've been with Dare County Schools, with my son in school. Anytime I've called a board member, they've answered the phone. So I feel like there is an accessibility. And one thing I have found out is when the mamas get together, the truth comes out. And my wife is part of the mamas down there. There, you know, there's groups, you know, there's eight, 10, 12, and when they start to get together, they will let their opinions be known. So I, I don't think there's any way to stop the communication from the mamas, because they're going to let you know. I've reached out to teachers since I've decided to run for the Board of Education, and they've all been very responsive. They've all said that they appreciate being contacted and ask their opinions, and I listen to their opinions, and I'm, I'm hearing satisfaction with the Hatter Island school teachers. I haven't talked to the teachers up the road here as much, but everybody seems satisfied. Not saying there's no problems, and not saying there's not things that need to be considered and worked on, but I think the satisfaction is, is pretty high among our teachers. And like I said, when the mamas get together, if there's a problem, we're going to know about it. There's no way not to know about it, because they have that kind of juice. So I feel like just accessibility of the board members to the, to the parents and to the teachers is what we need, and I feel like we have that. Not saying it couldn't be improved, but if I'm elected, my phone rings, I will answer it. I promise.
Candidate Bateman raised his hand.
Thank you. First, let me say, Charlotte, great question. Great question. I've known Charlotte for a long time. I think I kind of touched on this, the last board meeting that they had for the Board of Education, and that's just being available. That's just being seen. One thing that I'm going to do as Board of Education member is I'll be at the schools at least once a month. Specifically, I represent the District One, the Manio Schools. So I'm going to stop in and say, "Hey, to everybody. Charlotte, if you got a problem, I'll run up to Kitty Hawk and I'll check on you, too." But that's the thing. Being available, going around, being present, being known, that is a big thing. Being seen, being trusted. That builds that trust when you're seen and you're available. Going to the schools, opening the conversations with the teachers. Right now, I've had some teachers express to me that they don't feel comfortable talking to Board of Education members, because they're afraid that their job would be in jeopardy. "You talk to me, it'll stay with us, okay? If it's a bigger problem, we might have to talk about it one-on-one a little bit more." But with that being said, I want any teacher to know that you can come to me and talk to me anytime. My door will always be open. My phone number, I'll throw it out there for you. Something that I was, that I'm going to kind of push along if I can, once getting on the board, is making sure that any policy change and any sort of change to any agenda or whatsoever is publicized on more than just the website, okay? I'll research it, but not everybody's going to want to do that research. Facebook, social media, bam, right here. Email, text message. You got to email. You need to check it. It's in regards to this. That way, people can't say that they didn't see it, okay? There's been some policy changes here lately that I don't believe were very well-publicized. If they had been more-publicized, we wouldn't be in the mess that we're in today with some of it. So keep that in mind. Keep that in mind. I promise to push an agenda hard for complete transparency across the board with some sort of newsletter, emails, whatever the case may be. Thank you.
Time for question number five. It's submitted by Janine Emery, and it's directed to all candidates. The question is, "Given the recent legislatures under funding of public education, how can the community work with the state and local officials to meet the needs of a broad, diverse student body that is continually growing and changing?" The first response comes from candidate Carrie.
Just to summarize the question as I understand it, I believe this asker is asking how we can overcome budget restraints and still try and address the needs of all students with very much different needs. I think that is a hard question, and I think it's a big challenge for all school districts, but some ways we might be able to address that, that don't cost our school district a lot of money, are with the school staff we already have, utilizing our school counselors as a bridge with students and teachers to help address some of their issues they might be having, whether it's with home life, or emotional and mental health, or with academics. I also think that there has been good success with our mindfulness programs in schools. When I was teaching, we were asked and invited, and in some cases, sponsored, to do mindfulness training, which really helped to connect students and teachers. Teachers need mindfulness training, too, in many cases, with their own toolset of resources for managing heavy loads, and also just leveraging the expertise that our teachers have to offer. Teachers are such a diverse group that it's hard to talk about them as a mass, and every teacher brings with them all kinds of different backgrounds that might be able to enrich their classroom or their school and our school district in ways that aren't necessarily, although I would like a bigger budget, tied to the budget. Thank you.
Candidate Bright.
My turn. Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. "Given the recent legislatures under funding of public education, how can the community work with the state and local officials to meet the needs of a broad, diverse student body that is continually growing and changing?"
Thank you very much. Let's break it down into two parts, local and state. Our local guys support our schools, and you can see it every day. You can see it every meeting. Anything the board has asked reasonable of the Board of Commissioners, they've granted. And I'm not going to say anything unreasonable, but I haven't heard them say no to anything. We may have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. We may have to get it, do some work on it, but we'll get it done. So I feel like the question toward the local is moot, because I feel like we get the best support we can get, and it's probably near the best in the state. Second, the state. Now, this is where it gets a little more, not complicated, but cumbersome, because the squeaky wheel gets the grease. We've all heard that since the grease was invented. So what we would need to do is we would need to campaign our legislators, our representatives and our senators, and we would need to get to the funding bills in Raleigh and see what's in them before they go to vote, because somehow or another, somebody from somewhere will add a, you know, "We must spend $300,000 to protect the spotted-headed puppy mullet", and then it doesn't get passed. So we've got to keep the nonsense amendments off of our funding, and we have to pressure our legislators to pass these budgets, so we can get the funding we need.
Thank you. Candidate Zainer.
I think, sorry, I'm glad you had her repeat that question, because that was a difficult one. I think, like Haley said, overcoming budget restraints is not abnormal to public schools. That is not just a Dare County thing. That is not just a North Carolina thing. That is a public school thing. And so those challenges are not just ours. And so one way that we can maybe tackle some of these restraints, or, you know, the, the loss of budget from legislators, is looking to other counties. What are they doing? How are they best serving their students and their teachers with the same budget cuts? Because we do receive a really, we, our student supplement is one of the highest in the state, but our state is one of the bottom in the U.S. So we really could be doing better. Our students, we spend more on students, or, I'm sorry, less on students than Virginia, South Carolina, Tennessee, Mississippi. Our state legislator needs to do better. We need to, our starting teacher pay is $47,000. You cannot live here and make $47,000 and own a home. I don't think it's possible. If you're doing it, please talk to me after, because I'm really impressed. I, I'd feel like, again, a lot of these restraints are statewide, and these are things that other districts are also working on, and I think being collaborative in our tackling these problems is one way that we could go about it.
Candidate Twitty.
Thank you. I had to go with what Kenny was talking about. There is, you really do need to separate out, separate it, state and local. As Ms. Melissa said it earlier about going to Raleigh. This question, I think, came up in 2016 on my first time running for Board of Education. And during that conversation thereafter, very shortly thereafter, the Board of Education was able to take a trip to Raleigh and, and just talk about basically not just Dare County, but all the staff funding for the state of North Carolina. But there is an opportunity to go to your legislation and be heard from, from those. I mean, we, we vote them in as y'all vote us in. So they, they want to hear from, from us, just like anyone else would. So that is an opportunity. We can do that, and I would look forward to doing that in the near future. Over the past few years, hiring a new superintendent, we put in his contract that he would be responsible in being part of state entities, not just to stay in Dare County, but he, his requirement is to go out and to be part of association, different associations, to represent Dare County at the state level, to let them know they have a voice. And that last week was very heard of. Y'all been hearing some safety concerns? I've got to give credit to Mr. Bassnight. Mr. Bassnight stepped out to our state superintendent and the higher-ups in the local, in the state level, and they had a news conference with school superintendents and sheriffs offices, sheriffs throughout the state, to listen to the concerns of these, these safety issues that we're having in our schools, not from Dare County, but all this stuff out wide, you know? And locally, county commissioners has always stepped up. I mean, we have a five-on-five committee. We work with that on the five-on-five, but, you know, anytime we present our budget. For the last eight years, I have yet to see anything that's not been funded by our commissioners, and certainly a lot more on top of it after the fact when we come with our budget. So I really do believe, and say thank you to the commissioners for, for doing so.
Candidate Lloyd.
Well, I think everyone's pretty much addressed this question very well, but I do agree in the state and then the local level. And again, I'm going to point out how blessed we are as a community, that our commissioners do hear the needs and concerns of our community and of our teachers and of our students, and they come to the table ready to work with us, and so, or with the Board of Education and with the community, to make sure those needs are met among... and with the community, to make sure those needs are met among the children and the teachers. Again, I think going to the state level would be a great thing to do, especially as a group of educators for us, as the board members as well, to put our voice out there. As Kenny said, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And if you're not putting a voice out there and addressing the concerns and needs of our state and our community, then how are they going to know what needs to be taken care of?
Thank you. Candidate Bateman.
There we go, sorry. Thinking to understand the question just about like everybody else did. All great answers, by the way. Let me just say it like that. You know, when it comes down to trying to figure out how to maneuver these funds, I mean, we've got to, as board members, in my opinion, we've got to survey our teachers with no prejudice, no bias, no sort of thought process, go into it with an open mind to talk to them about, hey, what are you seeing right now that we can do differently with the money that's coming in? Then you take it to your commissioners. And it's like Mr. Twitty was saying, the commissioners, when it comes to the kids, I feel like they are, yes, 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 here's your money, go, 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 when it comes to our children. So, I got to tip my hat to Chairman Watered and the commissioners for being so forthcoming with those funds. As far as petitioning Raleigh for more funding, we've got, it's, you know, the same thing, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we got to be squeaky, y'all. Pack up the teachers, let's get in the car and let's go, okay? Let's put the pressure on and keep it on until they hear us. That's the bottom line. We've got to make sure that we have assessed our teachers properly, and the faculty members on what their needs are. Get that information, get that data, figure out the different line items that we want to make in any sort of budget, talk to our local officials, and then take it to Raleigh. Let's start here and work out, and then we can come together and make something happen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question comes from Jessica Ferns. It's directed to all the candidates. Concerning school safety, what steps do you think our schools should take to increase safe schools? Metal detectors, new policies, armed teachers, or do you believe we are doing the best we can? The first response will come from candidate Bright.
I get to go first on safety, all right. I know that the school has put in some equipment now for sporting events to help make sure there is a safe environment there, and I feel like that's a good step. Do I feel like we need metal detectors at the schools? Maybe not necessarily yet, but it may come. We seem to have a, we have different issues in Dare County than they may have in some other areas in the state. So, we definitely need to be safe. Proud of the sheriff and the school for having SROs in all the schools, that is a big deal. And I feel like just having an SRO there is a big deterrent. So, that program's got to keep going. As far as arming teachers, we need to discuss that. I'm definitely a pro Second Amendment person. Arming teachers, that would take some thought. We would have to think of that and have some good policy and program if we decided to do that. I don't know that we need metal detectors at the schools, but if it gets to the point where we do, if we start having problems or threats of problems, maybe we would have to institute it. So, I feel like we need to prepare as best we can, as fiscally responsible as we can. We need to learn from other incidents that we're seeing around the nation, and we need to take the after-action reports from those and implement anything here that we feel like we need to. Thank you. I don't want you to stand up now. So, I've got 15 more seconds, so just stay seated, okay? All right, thank you.
Candidate Zainer.
So, recently, Dare County Schools received a $300,000 safety grant. And when we received that grant, I emailed Mr. Bassnight and asked him how that was going to be used. And I realized that that was a discussion for the board to have, and that I may not be privy to that information. So, when I found out that it was used to purchase metal detectors for our sporting events, and eventually in all of our schools, I was slightly disappointed. I do wish that we had done an individual assessment of every school, and really looked into what they need, double entries, cameras, properly locking doors, anything like that that can help the everyday safety of our students and our teachers, I think should have been considered. The metal detectors are a step in the right direction. It is my understanding that the teachers are currently working them at sporting events. So, yeah, I think there's a lot to be said for really putting thought into these kinds of things. A $300,000 grant could have gone a long way in a lot of different directions to increase the safety for our teachers and our students. And as far as arming teachers goes, I'll just say, if you arm teachers, you will lose them. That has been proven. In other states, they will quit. They do, they have, in Tennessee. It happened. So, I would be very wary to go down that road and put our teachers in that sort of position. Thank you.
Candidate Lloyd.
We can all agree, school safety is important, because when kids or students are in school, they are there to be educated, they're to be learning, they're to be engaged. And so, that's what our focus needs to be on. And the teachers do not need to be worried about, is my building safe or whatever? And again, I think it's been said, that hasn't seemed to be a real issue here in Dare County as of yet, but as Mr. Bright said, it's always better to be prepared. You know, that's what Smokey the Bear always said, is be prepared. And so, I agree with him on that. Being prepared is very, very important, because training our teachers may be in that safety. What happens if someone is in the school and they're a shooter? So that they know how to react and respond, and keep the children safe, because these children are very valuable to their families and to all of us. Arming the teachers, no comment on that, because again, I agree, like Mr. Bright, I agree, we have a right to our Second Amendments, but keeping a gun in the classroom would open a lot of different doors and things that I don't think the school board or our citizens want to address. Having been, when I taught in Memphis, Tennessee, and I remember going from one building to the next, there was this interim space where there was no safety net in place, and I had my little second graders lined up, and they noticed that we were going from the lunchroom into the next building, and they ushered us back into the building real quick. Well, I had no clue. There was a gunman on the loose in the neighborhood. There'd been a domestic situation. And so, having been prepared, though, as an educator, I was able to get the kids safely back into the classroom, into the next building, because I was aware of what was going on around me. So, situational awareness was also something that I found very important. So, but I think the schools putting in the metal detectors was a very positive way to use some of that grant money.
Candidate Twitty.
Thank you, ma'am. Lately, I can't get into a lot of details on this concern, okay? But I assure you that the Board of Education has a plan. Every August, we implement and we approve our safe school plans for each, every school building that we have in Dare County. The $300,000 that in the grant funds was not strictly just bought for the metal detectors. I can't tell you where the other money went, because it is a safety security, but there were some funds put other places throughout the facilities, along with the metal detectors. And we are currently doing the process of using in our sporting events. I've been to First Light High School, First Light Middle School, and Manuel High School during those events, and I haven't, I personally haven't seen any fans being upset for that to take place. They have said, it's a sad day when you got to come to Dare County to have this, but we certainly see the media and our neighboring counties having to do the same thing. So, they felt comfortable and very safe for this to take place throughout Dare County Schools. And guns, I'm like with Kenny and Lisa, we just need to not just think about our teachers, it would be a staff process. You know, it would be our principals, our assistant principals, our custodians. So, it would be something that we really would have to set as a board to talk with and get the information from our state legislation, our Board of Education, our school employees, our administrators, to see, like a survey, how do they feel? Like Melissa says, certainly, we don't want to start losing our staff over this, and we don't want to put pressure. They've got enough pressure each and every day. The last thing we need is to keep adding more pressure, but if something, if it comes down, it would come from the state level, it wouldn't come from the local. So, that's where that would come from. So, thank you.
Candidate Carrie.
School safety is a real concern on the mind of every parent preparing to send their child to school for the first time, or each year after the end of summer, and it's also a real issue on the mind of every teacher, and probably at least at older ages, certainly after they've learned the protocols for a lockdown drill of every student. I wish that I could say that I think Dare County is excused from a threat of violence, but we know that it isn't, because we have had threats of violence. And I can tell you, as a teacher who only taught for three years, one and a half virtually during COVID, I will not be forgetting my first real lockdown, and none of those students will either. So, I think we have to take it as seriously as any school district anywhere in our country would, regardless of other indicators of violent crime. I think that we know that mass shootings or acts of violence in schools often comes down to two things, an individual with a weapon, and also a sickness or a mental illness that has gone unaddressed. So, while it feels like a tiny thing to be addressing mental health for our students, I believe that it's the beginning of addressing a much, much bigger thing. And students and adults who associate their local schools with a warm and safe and nurturing environment, where they have trusted adults with whom they can be themselves and express themselves and be heard, we would be addressing school safety.
Thank you. Candidate Bateman. I saw your hand.
Yes, ma'am. School safety, that's a big topic. It's one thing I'm a huge proponent of is school safety. One thing I'm going to ask the board when I become a board member is if I can be on that subcommittee, if I can be the liaison for the school safety piece of the puzzle for the Board of Education. I actually asked an administrator one time, what is the procedure if there was a gunman to come to the school, or somebody trying to do some random act of violence? They looked at me and said, Justin, you know, I'd love to tell you, but I can't. And I respect that, because if they publicized what they were going to do, the person that may be crazy enough to think about doing some random act of violence is going to try to circumnavigate that to make sure that their plan is enacted. So, I can appreciate the silence from Mr. Twitty here on saying, you know, there's things that are in place that I can't talk about, okay? I can appreciate that. Metal detectors, bring them on. If that's what it takes for our parents to feel safe about their kids going to school, bring them on. Arming teachers, all right, like Mr. Twitty and my other Republican counterparts up here, I'm pro-Second Amendment. But I believe you're opening a big can of worms when you start putting guns in the hands of teachers. Arming teachers, whether it be guns, knives, whatever the case may be, you're opening a big can of worms there that I don't know that we're ready to take on. Should the, I don't know if opportunity is the right word to use, but should an act present itself and a teacher be forced to make that decision? I believe regular school safety procedures and classes should be conducted with our faculty members on how to properly shield our children from such acts. I believe that our school resource officers are in place, and they do regular checks at irregular times throughout the building to make sure that everything is secure. And that's why, like I said, I want to be a part of that subcommittee on the Board of Education to help with that. Part of what my job was in the Army was defense, to protect and serve. That's where I feel called. Thank you.
I just have one more question, and I can give you one-minute answer.
At this time, we're preparing for the final question. It's from Jan Michael. It's addressed to all candidates, but your response must be limited to one minute. The first response will come from candidate Zainer. And the question is, "What is the only thing you would like to change in our school system?" Excuse me, that, let me rephrase. What is one thing you would like to change in our school system? Thank you.
This microphone, this is not my friend. Only one, wow. I think I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stick with our availability of more early childhood education. I'm gonna push that one, because I really think it affects everything in the long run. Anything that a child does, the choices they make later in life, that's going to give them the basis for their foundation for education, whether it be they go and get a CT certificate, or they want to go on to college. All of those people will do more, they will do better if they have a really great foundation in early childhood education, sorry.
Candidate Carrie.
I have to echo the same point. It is something that's well-researched and documented, that the experience that a student has in their earliest years of education set them up for their performance indicators the rest of the way through, not just through school till graduation, but their success metrics in career and beyond. So, to make that truly one thing, I would say, whatever programs we can implement to close the achievement gap and the opportunity gap between our youngest students, all of our students, but emphasis on our youngest students would be what got my number one slot.
Candidate Lloyd.
It's hard to say, because I see so many positive and wonderful things in Dare County Schools. One thing I would say, just like our other candidates have said, is keep the focus on educating, starting at an early age, and continuing that, not just giving up on it when they get to middle school, but continuing that foundational education for all of our children, according to their skill set and ability levels. I think that's very important, that we also adjust that to the needs of the students.
Candidate Bright.
I guess the bridge at the north end of Buxton does not qualify as an answer for this question. So, I won't put that out there. I think the one thing we really need to focus on is increasing our teachers' pay and our teachers' ability to live comfortably here and educate our children. I'm going to stick to it. The quality educator is going to have the quality educated children, and I feel like that's a big focus, that's been a focus of mine. I feel like we need to work Raleigh, we need to loosen up this money, and we need to get our teachers a wage where they can comfortably live here. Like I said, we just need to make it a little easier. We don't have to make it easy, easy-peasy, we just need to make it a little easier, and I think that's where my focus would be with one thing.
Thank you. Candidate Twitty.
Thank you. Over the past year, we, our school rating accountability went from number 11 to number 18, not at the fault of our administration. It's actually, the state is finally catching up to the level of EVOs throughout the state of North Carolina for Dare County Schools. As I'd like to see that Dare County Schools be back in the top 10 of top-performing schools in the state, and certainly would like to be number one.
Candidate Bateman. I saw your hand.
All right, one minute now.
Thank you. All great answers we've heard so far, but I believe that at the end of it all, open lines and clear communication and comfort with communication from our teachers, from our parents, with the Board of Education is very important. It's then when we can get together to solve any problems that have, that go on with our children. I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, if you have a problem and you want to reach out to me, I encourage it. I don't care if you're in hatteras, Kitty Hawk, first flight, it doesn't matter. I want there to be a comfort with the parents and the teachers to feel like they can reach out with any, without any sort of repercussions that they would suffer of any sorts. So, please, I think that that's when the work can get done, and we can really start getting things ready to keep these kids on the right, straight and narrow, and to increase the morale of our teachers and our students alike.
Thank you all. Now, it is time to hear the candidates' closing remarks. We will go in reverse order from the opening remarks. First is candidate Carrie.
Well, in closing, I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for taking the time out of a busy weeknight schedule to participate in this, in this process, and to the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting it, and the- process and to the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting it in the nonpartisan environment that you've very carefully cultivated and have continued to do so with every event and with every league activity. I also want to take the opportunity to remind everyone, voters here and voters who might read or watch this later, that while the Board of Education is a partisan race here in Dare County, it is not always and doesn't have to be when you as an individual think about it. I urge everyone voting in this election that in every race or category on your ballot to look at it as an individual role and really reflect on the party values that brought you to your, whatever you consider to be your political affiliation and determine how and if they apply, whether they apply to the Board of Education or different titles up and down the ballot. Because you don't have to follow the same pattern up and down your whole ballot. And I want to urge everybody to think individually, research individually, and vote individually with what you consider to be the values and the candidates that you guys have on the table, that we all have here on the table in Dare County. So that's my closing. Thank you.
Candidate Zaner?
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight and for your thoughtful questions. My vision for our school board is one that's approachable, transparent, and actively engaged with our school community. A board that not only welcomes feedback but seeks it out, not just from the public, but from our students, teachers, and staff. We need board members who thoughtfully craft policies that impact day-to-day lives of our teachers and students and then directly communicate those policy changes. We need to be proactive, not reactive in our decision-making. Working closely with our superintendent, we should strive to support learning that benefits the whole child. Academic achievement is crucial, but it's far more attainable when students have, are learning in safe environments with full bellies and the emotional tools that they need to thrive. We have incredible teachers here in Dare County, but many of them are facing challenges from heavy workloads, overcrowded classrooms, and not being able to live where they work. I'm eager to collaborate with fellow board members and administration to address these issues head-on, ensuring that our teachers are as supported as the professionals they are. Local elections like this one matter because the decisions made here have a direct and lasting impact on our students' education, their opportunities, and their overall well-being. In 2016, my opponent stated that he wanted to work on teacher housing for Roanoke Island. He has stated that in 2017, the board was researching school nutrition programs. Here we are in 2024. If I have learned anything as a candidate and through this election, it is that we as parents have to hold this board accountable or run as candidates ourselves to ensure that our best interests will be taken into account. Thank you again for your time tonight, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve your schools and the community. And have a great night.
Candidate Lloyd?
Thank you again, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. As I said earlier, it's a lot of work and a lot of time and effort. Thank you all for the support of sitting out here and coming tonight, offering up questions that were very thoughtful and that gave, got us thinking in different directions as well. And it also shows me the care and concern that the citizens of Dare County have for our students and our teachers and our community as a whole. You're not just thinking of just the students or just the teachers, but you're thinking of everyone at one time. And so I appreciate those thoughtful questions. You know, something I, pretty simple concept, but something I think, you know, what is an education for? It's for producing critical thinkers in our future. And so we want to see our students go out from here and be able to have the tools to be a critical thinker in society. We don't want to just tell children what they need to know. We want to teach them how to dissect that information and have the good teachers that are out there presenting that information. And we have those tools right here at our hands with our teachers and with our students. We just need to make sure our teachers, as we've said earlier, are getting paid adequately for the job that they're doing. I often remember thinking as a teacher, it's like, I'm actually the one educating these students who are going to be doctors. And the doctor's going to make more money than me, but I'm the one teaching him or her how to do these, having these skill sets. And so I think that we need to focus on that as well when we look at our teachers and our community. Yes, there's, you know, issues facing Dare County schools, but there's nothing that's not obtainable and overcomeable as we work together as board members and with parents and with our teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next response will be from candidate Bateman.
Thank you. That button every time. Thank you all again for coming here. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Great turnout this evening. Glad to see everybody. My closing statement is very simple, and I'm gonna say it and I'll profess it to the day I die, but I am a firm believer in my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I put all my faith in Him to help guide and direct me. I stand on His word and His promises. Now, I was, again, I've said this, I was born and raised in Yonchis. I'm a homeboy. Again, like Mr. Twitty, I graduated from Dare County School. So this is personal for me. I graduated from Manial High School. I'm very, very proud of that. And I'll say it again, I'm proud to be a Mania redskin. I'm glad they put that baby to bed when they did. I got kids in the system, and I want to do everything I can to see these kids succeed in life and be well-rounded American citizens. I want to maintain a closeness with what we have or with our Board of Commissioners to ensure that all needs are met for our children. I want these kids to have the same enthusiasm that I did about going to school growing up. I loved going to school here. I woke up every day excited to go to school. Well, most days, we'll say it that way. I'm a hype guy, okay? I was given the title of Coach Hype by the baseball moms here in Manial. I'm a high-energy go-getter, and that's what you're gonna get with me as a member of the Dare County Board of Education. Thank you.
Candidate Bright?
I can't profess that I had the excitement to go to school that Justin did. I got there, but it wasn't with excitement. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on such a fabulous venue here. This has been great, and it's been a very learning experience. And I was glad to have the opportunity to hear the other candidates' opinions on everything, and that's been very helpful for me. I have a history of service to Hatteras Island and Dare County, and I want to continue that service. And I would like to continue that service as your Hatteras Island District 4 Representative on the Board of Education. So with that said, I'll say the future is bright. Thank you.
Candidate Twitty?
Thank you, ma'am. Good job, Kenny. First of all, I would echo everyone. Thank you, the League of Women Voters, for taking the time, just not tonight. This process has been going on for months now. And getting it all lined up and having this presented tonight has been very, very nice. And luckily, we were able to do it for the current TV and for Hatteras Island as well. So thanks again. It's been a pleasure being on this school board for eight years. It's an honor, to be honest with you. It's something I don't take lightly. I wake up every morning, I go to bed, I think about Dare County schools. I want to do what's best for our students and our staff. And if those who have never worked in a government entity take the opportunity and listen to those who do, and things are not done very quickly, things take time. One person does not make it happen. It takes the full board. And the Board of Education doesn't make all the policies that comes down from the state, doesn't take all the money. We're not, we're not a board that taxes. There's procedures that the Board of Education has to follow. So in 2016, we started with a plan. I, for one, did talk about for Roanoke Island, have teacher housing. I'm still that way. But that's not just the full Board of Education. It takes others to work along with the Board of Education to make that happen. Child nutrition the same way. Things don't happen in a short period of time like we like to see it. But you don't stop. Your children don't stop in the classroom. They keep, they keep going because the teachers are still teaching them to show them the right direction. I'm not going to stop. I'm here for the community, students and staff of Dare County schools, and it would be an honor to serve another four years for y'all. Thank you.
This concludes the Board of Education Candidate Forum. We wish to thank the candidates for their participation and the voters for their attendance and questions. We also want to thank the Dare County Board of Commissioners for the use of their meeting room tonight and the Fessenden Annex and for videotaping this forum. We will post the video on our website at l w v dare n c dot org and on our YouTube page. The Dare County Current TV Channel will broadcast the forum as well. Check their website for dates and times. I will now turn the meeting back over to Fran Kapanos, the forum coordinator.
Thank you, Courtney, and thank you, candidates. Everybody did a fantastic job this evening. I'd also like to just let everybody know that we've asked all the candidates to participate in the League's online voter guide called vote four one one dot org. We have information on this on our tables. This is a one-stop-shop website that voters may access on their phone or their PC. And all you have to do is key in your address and you can view everything that's on your ballot. I want to congratulate all of the candidates on filling out the vote four one one bio and the questions, et cetera. That takes a lot of thought. And we, we know, we have a sample ballot, and we've got a lot of things to vote for, a lot of offices to vote for. So we have information on vote four one one for all of the candidates that are running for office. And whoever, most of them have filled this out. So we've got state offices, the national, the state, the local, and judges. So be sure to just look everything over and do a great job in November. Our future forum, we, on Thursday, October 3rd, we will be doing the same kind of a candidate forum for the Board of Commissioners. So please let your friends know and turn out again on Thursday, same place, same time, and the same format. We also have information on voter rules and voter guides, and you can pick that up at the table as well. We all know that we now have to have a voter ID when we, when we vote. So all the information on that is here. Early voting is going to be starting October the 17th and from eight to seven thirty every evening. And on one Saturday, the Saturday before election, the polls be, early voting will also be, be there. The sites are in Kill Devil Hills, also here in Mantio at the Administration Building, and also at the Fessenden Center in Buxton. If you want to do absentee voting, that's in the process now. You have to request the absentee ballot first, and that will be mailed to you, and you can mail it back or drop it off at the Board of Elections Office. We encourage you to join us as we strive to defend democracy. LWV membership applications are on the information table if you'd like some. And thank you very much for coming. Have a great evening. Thank you.